So I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting on July 25th, 2019 to order. And if possible, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a pretty light agenda tonight, but are there any additions? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is the Win Lady Rise Up Association recognition. Emily.
All right. My name is Emily and I work in water resources for Public Works. And I have the pleasure of working with volunteers out in our parks like Woodland Creek Community Park. Every fall, we tend to plant trees and shrubs along the riparian buffer, which is the areas right along the creek, to try to build up that buffer. It's really good habitat for our native species. It creates shade, and most importantly, it filters out pollutants to try to improve the water quality there. Well, all of these trees and shrubs were planted last fall, but we need to water them throughout the summer. It's been very, very warm. And it is through the WIN program with volunteer groups like Lady Rise Up Association that we're able to get these plants watered and keep them alive throughout the summer when it's very, very warm. So we'd just like to thank them for helping improve the environmental quality at Woodland Creek Community Park and give them their certificates for the Work Involvement Now program. Thank you, guys. Marsani? Yeah, come on up.
Hold on to your certificate and we'll take a picture right afterward, so just.
Dejeuner? Jordan? Shannon? Shen? Angela? Tylea? Tylea? Brandy? Kiani? Kelly? Emma? They weren't at the board right now. And Jade?
I might be missing a couple. What's your name? I don't know. Okay. If everyone's come up, we'll take a picture. Take a picture for the council.
Come up?
Yeah, right. You can either stay or you can go. We have a pretty quick agenda.
But you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
So next up on our agenda is public comment on I am not on the agenda. And we do have one person signed up, Andrew Riggs. Can you please state your full name and where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I can do it in less than three.
Great.
My name's Andrew Riggs and I'm operation supervisor with Pacific Disposal Lemay, the garbage company here in Thurston County in Lacey. I wanted to take the opportunity this evening to communicate with the city council, members of the public, and on record, letting everybody know that Pacific Disposal Lemay has filed for a rate increase with the UTC. It's a modest rate increase. We're looking for approximately 2.7% increase in the garbage rates and about 6.3% increase in the recycle rates. This is the first rate increase that we've filed since 2012. The reason that we are filing this at this time is to kind of offset some of the rising labor costs. There's cost of living increases that we're providing to our frontline employees, as well as fleet maintenance upgrades, things like that to better serve the community. So Pacific Disposal Lemay is really, really proud to be a part of the Lacey environment, you know, and culture here, as well as the greater Thurston County area. We've always prided ourselves in being a strong proponent for the programs and everything here within the county. We look forward to participating more in the future with, you know, the Lacey Fund Fair, the Mushroom Festival, you know, the Boys and Girl Scouts Christmas Tree Pickup. We're very, very proud to be a part of the community. And I wanted to take the opportunity to hand out my business card. If anybody has any further questions at a later date or anything like that, feel free to shoot me an email, phone call, whatever it is. That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
If you want to leave your business card here, well, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. Sorry I can't stick around. I've got a three-year-old that needs a story read to her, so.
No problem.
Thanks so much, guys.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Saying none. Next up on our agenda is the Mayor's Report. And I have two appointments this evening, both to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And I'll do it as one motion if that's okay. I've been interviewing the past several weeks and we've had some couple of great applicants. And we've been needing a hotelier for quite a while. And so I'm really happy that we have found one and she's gonna be a great addition. And then we needed another one from someone who participates in LTAC dollars, receiving LTAC dollars. And so I would move that we appoint Chad Carpenter to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And he's from the Washington Center. And Susanna Mills-Mattis to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as well, representing the hoteliers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I know Chad couldn't make it here tonight because they're having their big fundraiser for the Washington Center tonight. But Susanna's here. If you'd maybe come up and just introduce yourself real quick.
Name is Susanna Mattis and I work for the Candlewood Suites in Lacey and worked for them for 10 years. And I'd like to say thank you for considering me for this position.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor of the motion to appoint Chad Carpenter and Susanna Mills-Mattis to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. And I know your first meeting is tomorrow, I think, right?
Tomorrow.
And so Jason is the Chair of Lodging Tax Advisory, so.
Yeah, it's from 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM.
I'm sure, I know you received all that information.
You'll enjoy the committee. Thanks for serving.
So next up on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have one item before you is the Lift Station 15 Rehabilitation Project. Puna Clark will provide that presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. The city staff would like to recommend award for the Lift Station 15 Rehabilitation Project to the low bidder, South Sound Contractors. The low bid was $587,744.36. The engineer's estimate was $659,603.64. There are four bidders for this project. There are 180 working days for this project and it is estimated to start in September. Project highlights for this job include converting an existing vacuum prime lift station to a submersible lift station. We will also be installing an onsite standby generator, which will provide power to the lift station during power outages. And this will increase operation and maintenance efficiency during these power outage events. We will also be upgrading the existing wastewater lift station by installing standardized Lacey lift station items, including valve vault, electrical control panels, and site work. So this lift station, let's see, is located off of Galaxy Drive, behind LA Fitness, between LA Fitness and Safeway, as you can see there. And off of Martin Way, just behind there. This next figure is a more existing frontal view. You can see the enclosure panels that are open. It's the green figure there. And we have the chain link fence open. When the project is done, the enclosure panels will be gone and we'll have the new generator there. We'll be increasing it by a little bit, our footprint, but otherwise it will remain generally the same. So are there any questions?
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2018-27 to Low Bitter South Sound Contractors LLC from Lacey, Washington, in the amount of $587,744.36.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just something very quick. So it does mention that there could be some traffic congestion. In what areas do you see that happening? Because it's kind of behind two buildings, but.
Yeah, so the area where I believe there might be some traffic congestion is right between the two buildings.
Oh, okay. Not going the other.
Yeah, not going on Galaxy Drive, not on Martin Way. It is in a slight little alley. It's not traveled a lot, but people use it to cut between behind LA Fitness, to go to like Red Robin, or to somehow cut, I think it's called Quinalt, where the roundabout is to get on the other side to go to Marvin Road sometimes. And so that little alleyway sometimes does get some traffic and that is where the actual lift station exists.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And yes.
I'd just like to bring recognition that the contractor that is getting awarded the bid is from Lacey. It's always a good thing.
Yes.
Yes.
Jason?
Oh, you mentioned that the footprint will be extended some. Would that be going into that parking lot then a little bit?
So let me go back to this next one. So yes, we will be taking the two spots on, if you're looking at this picture, the two spots on the left-hand side and one spot on the right-hand side. We are in our easement area, so we haven't taken more area than is necessary or that we obtained that's not ours.
Is there a law of parking around the back of that building?
There are multiple parking spots, yes.
I know it's around the backside, so I can't imagine using the law.
Overflow, I think, mostly.
Yeah. You don't generally see cars parked in those parking spots. And all the times I've gone there, there were, I think, zero to one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, you know, I think they did put parking there because sometimes, you know, you might want to expand.
Is it even after work when people go to LA Fitness or to get sushi or whatever, those spaces are usually open?
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Saying none. It's been moved and seconded to award Lacey contract number PW 218-27 to Low Bitter. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, I just have one item. I'm gonna put Chief Semco on the spot here real quick. Since we have an upcoming event, Cops, Cars, and Kids, I thought maybe the chief could just, since we want to talk to TV land and the 20,000 people that are watching us tonight, he could at least share that with the audience and with council.
It's close, guy. I'm sure it's close to that.
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. So this will be our fifth year. I'm very excited about it because obviously this will be my first. But I hear this is gonna be bigger and better than ever. That's what the staff promised me. I understand that you've been there in the past and really appreciate your support and looking forward to those of you who can make it on Saturday. The weather promises to be a little bit cooler. We're looking at about 80 cars this year and 10 different events for folks and kids of all ages. Everything is free. There'll be everything from, I think we have 1,000 hot dogs and we have snow cones and we have water and chips and bouncy houses and the famous paint your hand and put it on the police car event. Among many other fun activities that will be out there, full interactive events for kids of all ages up to the adults. We'll have some things to do out there as well. We're expecting a crowd anywhere from about 3,000 or so, which gets us real crowded in our parking lot right here in City Hall. So the event is from 11 o'clock until 3:00. And we look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Thank you much. So on to Boards, Commission, and Committee reports. I guess I should have done this during my Mayor's Report. I do not have a report this evening. But I do want to talk about a couple of events that's going on. Tomorrow's the opening of the Senior Games. And so I'll be taking part in the opening ceremonies like we're asked to do every year. And of course, we have events here in Lacey for the Senior Games. And so we're welcoming all those senior athletes to our community and looking forward to taking part of that. And then on Friday morning, it's the Fifth Annual 22 Too Many PTSD and Veteran Suicide Awareness March. And I've been asked to be the keynote speaker at that event. And so I'll be doing that in the morning. And of course, we have Cops, Cars, and Kids right after that. So it's the next busy couple of days for me, but that is my report. I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
So the Joint Animal Services Commissioner, Jazzcom, had a retreat July 15th. And basically, the gist of the retreat was on strategic planning and defining the organizational structure, roles, and capacities. And then coming up with what a work plan for the next month, for the next five to 10 years would look like. And basically, that's all we covered, which was quite a bit considering it was five hours. And LOT does not have a meeting this month. And the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency was already reported out the last council meeting, so that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
First one's very short. The Ad Hoc Committee on Home. One of the decisions coming down the pike for this group is the departure of United Way from the piece of the organization that's known as the Community Investment Partnership. They will be formally leaving in June of 2020. Our Executive Committee will be meeting to discuss the future relationship between the organizations. They're still very much wanting to work together, but they want to separate the United Way monies from the monies that are contributed by government. We're also going to be talking about our relationship with this new Regional Housing Council. One of the questions under consideration is whether it would make sense to merge the two groups because our missions and our membership are similar. There's merits on both sides of that argument, so more to come on that. InterCity Transit is met on July 17th. And we've scheduled a public hearing on the draft transit development plan that's going to occur on August 7th. The meeting starts at 5:30. We adopted a resolution regarding reimbursement of capital expenditures from proceeds of bonds. So what that means essentially is that the bond collections don't quite keep up with the expenditures. So it's just a formal process where InterCity Transit advances the money and then recoups it as the bond money comes in. A really fun thing we received was an update on the Walk and Roll Program. This is a youth program that InterCity has. Some pretty interesting statistics. We partnered with 33 schools and three school districts to provide education and outreach on biking, walking, and riding the bus. We reached 7,665 students and their families, which is pretty remarkable. Public transportation education and field trips, 582 kids got to take part in that. It's a really great program, so highly recommend checking it out. Let's see. Tomorrow, we will have another planning retreat that'll be about a half-day event starting at 8:00 in the morning. And speaking of retreats, the Thurston Regional Planning Council held one on July 12th. Much of the day was devoted to updating the council's strategic plan for the next couple of years. The process for distilling different ideas was interesting because we were asked to look at a number of topics such as housing and transportation, examine their relationships to each other, as well as how each would be affected by external forces like major earthquakes, wildfires, floods, and the like. And the intersections were really revealing because they illustrated how interconnected they and we are, how interdependent we are. So this led, of course, to a discussion about how to adjust the Regional Planning Council staff's structure to address long-term trends, as well as the appropriate role and activities for the organization for the next two years. We also learned that the latest population forecast for Thurston County calls for 1,006,000 new residents by 2045. It's 25 years. That's not too long. This event was held at the Redmond Casino and hosted by the Nusqually Tribe. We also got a quick update from them on some interesting things happening there. They're gonna have a new health clinic in about a year and a half. They're repurposing their public safety complex. And the tribes and jurisdictions are working to provide wraparound services, which I thought was interesting. They're gonna build 50 houses in the next year, which is great because they have a waiting list of 130 people for that housing. And they're doing a master planning process for infrastructure. So I'm really happy to see that relationship with the Regional Planning Council. And that's my report.
Thank you so much. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
So I just have one report tonight. Law and Justice actually met today, this afternoon. A couple of things from that. We have a new updated charter. And as part of that new charter, there are several new members on the council, one of those being the county manager, another being the Director of Pretrial Services, which is a new position the county just added. And then two community members who were looking for community organizations that are involved in the criminal justice system in one way or another. And the advertising for those two positions actually just went out yesterday. So we're looking for two positions there. We got an update from the new pretrial services manager, Mary Ann Claire. And a couple of things going on there. They were awarded an Arnold Ventures Grant. It's not a monetary grant. It's actually a research grant. So it's a five-year project where Thurston County will be a research action site. The idea is to, working with that organization and the Center for Effective Public Policy, for technical assistance and research work in order to develop a risk assessment tool to better assess pretrial risks as far as whether they should be incarcerated pretrial, what kind of services they need, what kind of restrictions should be on those people based on a different set of criteria than has been used in the past. I don't know if Chief wants to add anything to that. He was there at the meeting with me today as well.
The only thing I would add is I thought the approach was well-done. Ms. Claire is putting together a group of stakeholders. She asked me to participate to get law enforcement's view on what that criteria would be as well, which I really appreciated. So they're bringing in folks from all different disciplines so they can get the best look and the best working model possible before that goes into effect.
Excellent. They're also hired, under her position, a pretrial services diversion officer, which is the first time they've had someone in that position to actually focus solely on working with people, primarily people with mental health issues, on how they may be diverted from the legal system into possibly the mental health court or different options. So that was her report. And most of the rest of the meeting, we discussed kind of putting together the work plan for the next steps for what Law and Justice is gonna work on. And I think there were some really good ideas there, a lot of it having to do with collecting data and stuff to see what the trends are and to see what the outcomes are as well. So I think there'll be a lot of good stuff going on at Law and Justice over the next couple of years. One other thing, we did also meet the new opioid response coordinator, which is another new position at the county. Her name is Katie Strozak. She's been there three weeks. The first week and a half, she said, was all paperwork. So she didn't have a whole lot to report yet. Right now, she's still meeting with all the key players. But I think that's gonna be a helpful position. We clearly have an opioid, you know, drug epidemic problem. And having someone to actually coordinate some of the response work that the committee's been working on will be very helpful. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearn.
So SportsDestinations.com published an article that Olympia and Beyond shared out today that talks about the 226% increase nationally of participation in the sport of lacrosse. It used to be a niche sport, but it's emerging in the United States. And in that article, our area, the Olympia area, unfortunately, was mentioned as an area of lacrosse participation. But specifically in that article, it did mention the Lacey-Thurston County Regional Athletic Complex, which is the RAC, and offered a picture of the Olympia lacrosse team participating at the RAC. So that's something that the VCB, Olympia and Beyond, helps promote, and so kudos to the RAC. LTAC meets tomorrow for the first meeting of three, four, or five meetings that we'll have this year to dole out the lodging tax to qualified applicants.
Great. I actually have something to add on to your report with Olympia and Beyond. Actually, a little while ago, I asked Jeff Bo, who's working with our sports commission, to look into what is the economic impact of the regional athletic complex. And so what they had to do is they had to go back and find all the events that happened in 2018 and then track how many people approximately came to each event and how long they were there for. And then they used a formula to figure out what the economic impact was of the regional athletic complex in 2018. I've been meaning to report out on this for a while. And so he finally got that report to me and it shows for 2018 that the economic impact of the regional athletic complex was $3,722,597.
Wow.
So that's a big number, right? And so we keep talking about the power of sports in general, youth sports in particular. But if you look at some of, you know, the events that happened at the RAC, there is use by everyone. You know, it's the senior nationals and senior softball games and you name it. There is quite a few different events that came through the regional athletic complex. So it's really having a huge impact on our economy. It's something that we don't think of. We think of. We think of, geez, you know, this is what we have to spend to keep it operating. But look at what it's generated for our region. It's a, that's a really big number. And I think we should all be proud of our commitment to the regional athletic complex and what it means to our local business and our local economy. So, I just wanted to add that.
Is that amount for the city of Lacey or for the county?
So, that is for the region. So, it is regional athletic complex. And so, they look, again, they look at how many people were registered for each event and how long they were here. And they base that number on what the average person spends through hotel and stuff. So, they didn't, weren't able to track it down to just Lacey hotels or Lacey restaurants. But obviously, given where the RAC is at, northeast Thurston County probably had a pretty big impact.
Right. So, you're defining region as northeast Thurston County or?
Well, that's a good question. That's what the people coming to the RAC spent. So, where they spent it, that's, you're right. But I imagine, like I said, since all the restaurants and everything is over in this area, I imagine a lot of that, I imagine that impact, a lot of that impact was there.
Yeah, I mean, you put yourself in shoes. You come from out of town, go to the RAC. You're not going to stay at a hotel that's, you know, 30 miles away. You want to stay one that's closer.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I've spoken to several of our hoteliers in the past about it and they, what I got from them is that it's the second biggest driver of nights in the hotels here in Lacey, in the Lacey hotels. First being JBLM.
Yep.
JBLM is still the single biggest because of all the different things they do. But number two was the RAC.
Yep. So, that's, I just wanted to add that. I've been meaning to talk about that for a while. Councilmember Stedman.
Community Action Council met yesterday. It was even lighter agenda than we have tonight. But one thing that I reported on previously is we have crews that are going to Kidattas County and refurbishing houses there, weatherizing them for people lower income. And they're halfway through and they're doing a great job. They're well-welcome and the county over there is very pleased. Other than that, I don't report on Lacey-South Sound Chamber or Solid Waste Advisory Committee until next meeting, but I wanted to wish State Rep Lori Dolan a happy birthday.
That's right.
22nd District, Position 1, State Rep. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Zeeman.
Thank you. The Board of the EDC does not meet again until September. However, economic development in the city of Lacey is going very well. In fact, I had the honor of being at a ribbon cutting here in Lacey for another new Lacey business that I hope does thrive. I also wanted to discuss the Lacey Maker Space. They are looking for volunteers and they have two events coming up on August 3rd. 3D design, personalized key ring design at 8:00 AM on the 3rd and air rockets at 10:00 AM on the 3rd. So, not only is this a wonderful space for people to gather and create, but it's for tinkerers to advanced makers and professionals. And it's a wonderful resource for Lacey and the region to spark innovation. So, I wanted to let the public know about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, just like that, we're at the end of our agenda. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege here and thank the several councilmembers who came to my annual summer party last Friday and were surprised to find out that it also turned into a wedding. And so, I got married to my longtime girlfriend, Becky Welsh, now Becky Welsh Writer. And it was a great night and I just want to thank everyone who was there and participated in that. And we're very happy and we had a great time and you guys made it very special, so.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Well, thank you.
I for one was surprised.
So, given that, we've reached the end of our agenda. As always, keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.